Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hedner. Tony Corpey.
Here.
Jennifer Windles.
Here.
Ted Saxton here. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Skokstad-Diet.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Tony. Any further discussion? Here now to call to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public open forum, I didn't receive anything and I'm guessing there's not any unless June wants to say something. Alright, moving on to consent agenda. Approve consent agenda as presented, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Mike and a second by Terry. Alright. Approve.
You can read them.
Yeah.
Because you don't have to as president.
Oh, okay. I never remember if it says presenting.
It says that. The only comment I would make on the minutes, technically if you recall, we were double booked through the library and I did catch it when I spoke freely, it says I own the minutes from the library. We'll correct that. It was saved here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Bill had registrations upstairs. And so, other than that, I support it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Action items. Resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Any motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Terry. And then...
Foot flop.
Foot flop.
Okay. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, being resolved, the School Board of International Falls ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Wells Fargo Your Cause to Falls Elementary, $420. PCA Mill of International Falls, two pallets of white paper valued at $3,800. FES PBIS Program, $1,250. And FHS PBIS Program, $1,250. Bronco Football Boosters, HUDL software for football team, $1,603.13. Weight Room Project at Arena, $2,000. Purple Pride to FHS Athletic Programs, $8,919.71. Twins Community Fund Softball Dugout, $10,000. Border State Bank, Donuts to welcome all staff back. I have a motion by Terry and a second by Rox. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving on to administrative reports. Melissa Tate, elementary principal.
We're at 557 right now from North Elementary. That's how long it is. On October 2nd, we have our preschool day coming up. And that's where we meet at grade 4 and then go off to school. On our school board this one coming, so we're pretty busy. We have a parade. Recently, we got our, one of the recess sheds constructed by Mr. Porter, so we thank him for that. And then we ordered supplies, so that will hopefully help keep kids busy. It went out to 3rd through 5th grade playground. And then also, if you walk around their playground, you'll see that over the summer, they caviacked it painted some of our preschool playground initiatives about there. There's still a few things left to do, but you got kind of familiar. And then I guess, other than that, it's been a really smooth start. It's started good this school year, probably a good starting start. It's been a good year so far.
Okay, thank you. Tim Eversen, secondary principal.
We are at 557, we're up 6 from last month. And that's including 18 students right now enrolled over at the ALC. We had a good start in high school, too. We also, at the ALC, we've got an independent study program that we're able to implement now through the Northville Learning Center where students have to have face-to-face time 20% of the time and then they can do work online and Odyssey work. We have homecoming coming on Friday, October 4th. Our homecoming Pet Fest is gonna be on Monday, September 30th. Coronation and Pet Fest in the morning. And then we'll have our parade the afternoon of October 4th at 1:30. They'll come the same route. We have parent-teacher conferences on Monday, October 7th and Wednesday, October 9th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's no school on the 17th and 18th. And we have two applicants for the student school board position. And the student council will have a meeting soon. And you will have a representative at the end of the week.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I ask, Tim? I forgot, did you guys, did everything go through for that? I can't remember the wording, but what's it, for outpatient or something?
Is that aftercare?
Yes.
We're meeting again this Thursday. And they did start the aftercare program in August. And there are students here and over at the ALC who are attending and it's an outpatient.
Okay.
And then, we're gonna meet now our group on Thursday. And we're gonna start talking about, Pi is going to be our preschool agent for us to grab the grant money. And the judge had talked to us about, I can't remember the different companies, but it's like Anheuser-Busch and some of the big distilleries, there's a lot of grant money that you can get for treatment. And we wanna go get some money for aftercare or some clean activities for night, maybe bowling, instead of things like that. And then, as for Gen 2 and her brother's foundation, we're gonna try to go out and see grant money where we're able to provide to Pi. And he'll be preschool agent, so hopefully we'll have some of those things started here in the next couple of months. At least in the next month, we'll start doing some grant grading and more investigation.
Good.
But it's been really fun.
Thank you. Kevin Grover, superintendent?
Okay, in no specific order, I gave you a pile of stuff in front. Community Ed had some updates, some numbers. You can look at that on your own time, if you will. I will start, first of all, in the career, because there's, in here, it looks like an email. And this actually came from Tim. And it's a correspondence from a student at the ALC, past student at the ALC, that I thought was a good read. And it hits home on what you are doing, what we are doing, what the ALC is doing for a chunk of these kids. And Tim had talked about, I think last month, you know, we had a group of summer kids that wanted classes, put the effort in, and got what they needed to get. But, so I just, I asked if I could share this with you, so that's for your reading. I would like to, Missy had mentioned the shed over at the elementary. A thank you, because it really doesn't come through for us for a donation necessarily, but Pi donated all the money and made that possible. So, just like he did for West End, Missy's working with getting some more equipment. And we will use that. Hopefully it helps not only kids stay active, but have more stuff, keep them busy and less issues. So, thank you to Pi. Someone had asked on preschool numbers, so, and I got back to them, but I just wanted to share with all of you, I think as of last Tuesday or some, sometime last week. In the, all day, 4-year-old, that's full with 20. The Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so, all day, so three days a week is full at 20. The Tuesday, Thursday, all day, is full at 20. Mandy's morning has 19, again, a cap would be 20 with the para. And then the afternoon is at 15. So your preschool numbers are good. And if someone comes, obviously we have room for some. But yet, you're not gonna, you know, everything half-full either. So, I mean, those numbers are good. Well, they should stay good. Obviously, kids do, some of the younger ones, when they hit 3, we will get some during the year just normally, but there is still some room. So I got the ALC, thank you for the preschool numbers. I included an item that I've been looking at for a while. And I guess I'm open to your, or I want your thought. I have much time to look at this, but you can take this and look at it. It's a company that came across earlier. And there's actually a fair number of schools across the US. But there's also some in our area that are using it. And really what it is, it's a visitor management system. So a person comes in and they either scan a driver's license, all it takes is name and date of birth, or they can give it to you manually. But obviously, seeing it on the driver's license or some document, you know, ensures to us that it is. Mike Holden, for instance. Once it's in, once it's in, they don't have to every time they come, if they come regularly. They check in, just like you would check in going to dentist nowadays, or the clinic, or whatever. Put in where they're going, you know, they'd still come and ask, it's not some more bypassing. It instantly prints just a cheap little sticker, you know, form. And it says, "I'm going to Home Ec," or whatever. The piece that is interesting though, is it runs it against the current. It's updated weekly, so as current as that is, sex offender data. And, you know, I guess from my stance, it's not a background check. But contractors, anyone technically, we could do that for, you know, contractors might not have them every time they come in. But, to me, that's the biggest fear. You know, it's not if we have a theft, you know, a kleptoman school or something like that. But that's probably the biggest. Cost of it is for both buildings is $1,000 a year. And so that, you know, it's not an overly, there's a setup. Upfront, you pay for the device, you know, the computer, the printer. And so it ends up being about four grand, setup and all of the training. But annual basis, it's just $1,022 or something. So I guess I'm interested if you think, you know, we have people check in, you know. There's not a yap, we haven't had any issues as of where, but it would be an upfront check to a certain extent. You know, whether they're going in, even if they're going into a classroom, that teacher's there and they're supervised. Think it's worthwhile or not. You know, if they're gonna be alone with kids, we do a complete background check as a coach or something different. I guess I'm drawing it out, if you think I talked to, Proctor is one that I know, Mr. Engelking, you may have had it. You know, it's, it's an option. I just said it's not.
Do you guys, you guys have looked?
Tim looked at it, you know, Secretary Missy wasn't available, they did the local demo. You can do more, but I mean, that's on the surface. And really, we can also add our own database, but we're talking a couple of families a year. You know, for instance, say you have a challenging divorce and a custody battle, and maybe someone doesn't have it. You can put that in also in this, but it's manually entered. Also manually put a warning or alert on our Skyward. It has stuff in it so that if there's Mike Johnson, by Mike Johnson's, you know, it'll pull them all. And you have to, secretary has to make sure it's the right one. And I mean, it is that quick, you know, as far as, unless you have internal issues. And it pops up on our screen, you know, if there's an issue with the secretaries. You can also have a go to some other places if you want, you know. Like we could have a go to the principal's desk or their home, you know, thinking, hey, if someone's gonna be not denied, you might have an issue. I don't know, it just intrigued me.
It did, me too.
You know, that, you know, it's not $10,000 a year where you start going, you know.
You said Proctor had it, do they still have it?
There, I called their principal. John thought they were, for some reason, looking at something else. But he said they've had it for several years, as far as he knows. He gave me the principal, I called him actually on Thursday and he hasn't got back to me. But they show a map of the different districts. There's, I'm gonna guess, 50 in Minnesota that have. And that was the quickest one, or the, you know, closest.
Closest.
I think Red Lake also had it, but I...
I'm just wondering why they would, probably be the reason why they have it.
And I can find, like you say, we don't have to order it. And like you say, I'm not asking for your approval. I'm more asking, they have educational and, well, you know, where to go and we wanna roll it out. We obviously wanna educate people that, you know, this... Excuse me, this is coming type deal.
Is that something that if parents are picking up in the elementary gym, they would all be run through this?
I think, I would say it's only if you're checking in, so to speak. Because most parents that come in at the end of the day over there, you know, if they're gonna check the kid out, you know, we would, A, it's an easy way to verify who it is, too. But I mean, mainly if they're going into the building, is what I'm thinking. You know, like you say, it could be whomever, you know, going in and volunteering in a class or doing whatever, it's more, you know, if you're just standing there waiting to pick your kid up, and you know, it's you, I don't perceive, we don't do a visitor badge for all those people. You know, we have visitor badges now, but we give to people. And of course, then they can come out, they just, they check out on the iPad type deal if they want. If they forget to, it's just like, now, or is there, you know, is there a moment at the end of the day type deal? Just like you say, it's, just intrigued me a little bit, because like you say, it wasn't really expensive. And then, I mean, they have data of how many they hit on it a year, I don't know. If he would have many, it depends on who's, you know, coming in. And like you say, it's not, if you had a DUI, or if you had, you know, if it's criminal sexual, it's whatever. That's the database that they keep updated and that's what they, you know. So I, I don't know, like it's thoughts, or I mean, A, it's a visitor management system. We have, you know, a process in place now, but we just, that's, that's the...
So you're asking just to look at it then?
I'm just asking you to think about it. And like you say, I mean, if the gut is we go forward, we go forward.
I like the idea of it for, more for contractors, too.
Even contractors, I just thought that.
Our guys come in here and they, from small-town tech, and we have one fob. And a couple of different people use that same fob, so it would, like, there's a risk there. I mean, not from small-town tech guys, but you know what I mean, like, just in general.
They would still get the fob, but I guess what...
But there would be a policy saying that they have to...
Correct. And like you say, there are people, and during the school year, we don't have a ton working during the day. Summer, we still have kids, you know, from time to time around. And, you know, to be honest, if someone can't pass that, I have a little bit, you know, a lot of times, we don't do, you know, for instance, I just picked on, we've never done it, we don't ask, you know.
And you probably should, right?
People even right now are in here, you know, working. And they have that type of background, you know, so...
Yeah, I'm for it.
Well, a grand a year is not a lot.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good supplement to the system.
And there's no, it's not a long, you know, it's a long contract, you know.
Right.
You don't want it, other than you had to spend the four grand.
You can only do it for a year.
For one year, you know. The other thing, I haven't talked to Missy at the high school. It's actually, we were looking at, it's a double printer. Because you refer, you know, like, um, called dental state. They write out a ton of those passes. You don't wanna print all those out on sticky. So they have one that just prints on paper, and you can do them. And, you know, and they say within the next year, I'm gonna hold my breath, they're working to get them to write back in the Skyward or Infinite. Right now, that's a tricky deal. Most Skyward, Infinite campus, the student management systems are kind of a one-way. They don't want other software writing back, doing their attendance. But the company is working with the others, because otherwise, you know, it is a double entry. But we do double entry right now. We take, you know, the list that we have and have to manually put in if kids are checking in. Or if they came in and checked in, if they could write right to the system, secretary would, you know, type of deal. But that's not right now.
Does Skyward already have a similar system?
Skyward has a way you can go in and print a pass. It's a full-page sheet, it's not a sticky, it has no, I mean, it's, to be honest, not real, I don't wanna say. It's not timing, it's quicker to write it out, it does nothing for visitors, you know, that piece where they know, you know. But there is a way, it will print a, like, admit pass on a piece of paper like this. And I'm sure there's a way you can get it on a smaller printer or something. But it's more steps for the teacher than it is for, or the secretary than it is worth just jotting it out, keeping a copy, and you can get back to it whenever you can before they did.
Yeah.
Perhaps let me know, I think it's worth, we'll talk some more. Tech committee had met last year twice, I think, to try and get kinda going, looking at what the needs are, what the wants are, things like that. The group decided to do a short survey, we got that done. A info came in and that's when the year kinda ended. So I sent an email out and I'm just throwing it out, if there's any improvement. We gotta be careful not to have, I was really wanting to be involved. But Thursday, September 26th is a date I picked. I know there's a minor conflict, but drawing it out to reorganize and figure out what our next step, steps are. If that's not a great day, we can look at, like you say, I don't...
What time are you talking about on that day?
I think I said 3:30.
Okay, so what is school?
At least to get and see who's interested. I have all the survey stuff, but we gotta figure out how we wanna deal with it. I guess I'm asking more, if there's someone that is interested, let's get the names, let's get staff, and we'll figure out a time, you know, to go forward. And I guess I would like to, you know, figure out, maybe get somewhere, you know, wherever that is, so...
I'm interested in that, is that gonna be at the library up here again? Or, no, it was in Charlie Anderson's class last time, right?
We went to Charlie's class, we'll see.
Just wherever it's at, is where it's at, I'm going.
I also included, I think I included, yeah, in this, and I did copy it on paper, or on color, because there is a little table, if you look far enough in. This is the in-service your staff went to, teaching staff went to in Virginia. And they do a whole survey afterwards. And I just, there were like seven questions. And I copied, I think, two of them, because I thought it was pertinent. You know, there's one question, what were your favorite two sessions? You know, of course, everyone went to different things. But I guess from my standpoint, I did send it to the teachers, the most part, it's, A, it was 600 and some, I don't know what time here, out of 900 and some. So a pretty good response rate, first of all. And just like you say, if you look at it, pretty good marks, in my mind. So I just wanted to share that. If anyone wants to see the whole thing, you're more than welcome to, if I can, you know, whatever. Two more things, just so you're aware, I think we're ready to finally go on the Falls Elementary Project. We've gotten a variety of groups come look at it. And I have a proposal ready to be released. It should go out tomorrow with a timeline to have something back in front of you in October. We've had Johnson Control was up and looked at it, LHB, which is an engineering firm. There's another firm coming on Wednesday of this week. There's one more that reached out. Just from trying to, you know, get the word out ahead of actual, Johnson Control doesn't wanna continue on, but the LHB is, and the other one that's coming Wednesday, positive. The third one, which I was not well aware of, but this Nelson Rudy that did the arena air exchange. I thought that was, that was their specialty, and in essence it is. But they also do all kinds of air exchange in colleges and schools and boilers. I just thought they were arenas, and it is, they were up here two weeks ago or something. And I took the guy back up to the airport, two guys were here, one of them flew in a little smaller plane, more fun than, you know, type deal. So I picked him up and I was taking back. Well, let me know if there's ever anything else. I'm like, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not doing another arena in my career, as far as, you know. It's like, oh, no, we do more than that. So, they're gonna come back up and look at it, so I, you know, and they were good to work with, so... Just so you're in the loop there. And the last thing is superintendent goals. And I apologize if I dropped the ball, we were in a work session and somehow I missed that. So, now is the time, we talked last week, for you to come up with what you want, what you're working on. And I said I do have some ideas, but I guess I open it up for, I guess, Ted to take and run.
So...
My stuff I will give, or my stuff.
Well, who has ideas for goals first? Let's start with that. I have a couple, you have some? Okay. Well, so let's start with what you think, Kevin. And then, then we can talk about what Rox and I have in mind, and then discuss them all as a board to see what's best.
Okay, first of all, I'm just like always, I, I guess I won't say demand, but you gotta keep the academic goal on. And so, again, we will have that. October 1st is the deadline. Q will see as tentative we put the goal in place. We're waiting on a webinar, which is this next Tuesday by the state. And so, before we release it, that this is our final deal, we want to make sure nothing comes out of that. But we will have a site to district goal, so I would say that's number one. And these aren't in any specific order, but the technology initiatives see that through. I would like to, and I'm not gonna say it has to be called the Blue Room Panel, but revisit that. It's getting to a point now that everything has to be recreated. But I think, you know, our long-term vision is to do a check-in back in and invite, and open it up. Can new members join us, whatever, but get, get that process going again on a continual basis. And the last thing I put down, and it just hasn't worked out very well, and I'd like to make it happen, is have administrative, hopefully the administrative meetings we get going. And mainly, I'm talking to Tim, Missy and I, and we do talk and this and that. But we don't consistently sit down for an hour even, and how are things going? It's more, you know, flying by the seat, you know, touch base whenever. And we're not necessarily all hearing the same thing either. And so those, those are what I put down for, I think, you know, and I have other ideas, but...
Alright, Rox, what do you got?
Well, Kevin, I think that when, over the time that I've talked with you as a school board member, I think that you are extremely knowledgeable on a whole bunch of subjects. And I think that there's one thing that you would admit yourself that you're not quite as knowledgeable on, and that's the special ed stuff. And so, I have, I would wish that you would be willing to look at the paperwork of the process from referral to IEP. So you got your referral, your permission to test, your evaluation, your IEP, et cetera. If you would be willing to review a set of that on one kid, just a one-time thing, one-year thing. Or not even one year, it's the initial process, referral to IEP. With some notes on it from a special ed teacher saying, you know, I spent this many minutes putting this referral together, please review it. I spent, you know, this much time getting ahold of this person, that person, this person, please look at. And just, and I found a special ed teacher that's willing to do that, just attach a little sticky note onto each of them, so that you could be a little more familiar on the process. Because I really feel that when you and I've talked, you've been very honest with me, that it's, that's an area that's not as easily understood. So, that's what I wish you would do.
Alright, so I have a, I have a few written down here. So the first thing is student retention. Not necessarily increasing the number of kids that go to our school, but increasing the number, or decreasing the number of kids that don't go to our school. And right now, and I could be wrong on the numbers, but right now I think that 83% of kids that are enrolled, that are in the district are enrolled at our schools. It'd be nice to see that increase by 1%. The next is customer service. And under that, I have be proactive to develop a communication plan that includes an up-to-date website. And I was thinking of better utilization of Skyward, but I guess I'd leave the specifics more up to you. But a lot of the stuff on the website, even though we have a new website, is outdated. And it's not, it's not necessarily your stuff, but it's stuff that could be, that you could encourage people to update a little more. And then the last one I had was, is on along the same lines of technology. Develop a tech plan based on the teacher surveys and... Develop a tech plan based on the teacher surveys and I couldn't think of the best way to say it, but really to make it so that the students can learn the best. Or, that's why I can't think of a clever way to say it, but.
What words Smith would be picking for that, you know, for goals, I'm not worried about that.
So.
I'm not against any of the above. I guess my question before, and I'm gonna go back to Rox's. Rox's is a fairly easy one for me to measure and, you know, that's the piece with goals, you know, just like academic achievement, when we go back to that. Like it or not, we put a goal up there. Measuring is a tougher deal, you know, unless it's a matter, you know, give me five things or four things, whatever the number is, you're gonna do to show you did this. Because like I've said before, if our academic goal, we need it, it's great. Now what made us need it? I mean, there's a million things, you know, it's hard to pinpoint. And so, you know, like going back to student retention, someone asked for some numbers. I, we don't have formal October 1st numbers yet for this year because there hasn't been a Mars mission. If you look back at numbers from the last two years, it looks like the percentage about is down 8%. What is that attributed to? I mean, first of all, I'm gonna say we have a great board and we, you know, kept kids here, but that's hard to put your finger on. And we can put it for a goal, but unless, you know, we get specific enough to say, let's do these three things.
Well, so I intentionally didn't make it specific, I guess, because I didn't want to dictate for you how to do your job.
I want to know how we're measuring, you know, because the last thing, you know, that's what I want is, you know. And right now it is arbitrary, that's fine, but, you know, you want to make sure, at least in my mind, because I will put enough time to make sure I've, you know, fulfilled and done hopefully a great job at whatever I set out to or whatever you direct me to do. You know, the website piece, yeah, we gotta keep going, but again, you know.
Yeah, I'm thinking the website more as just a part of communication, but it seems like if, if everything was accurate and we took a little bit more proactive approach to it, instead of like making sure stuff's up to date on it the week before school starts. And some of the stuff you can only update the week before school, I understand that. But that, to me, that's the easiest way to refer somebody if they have a question, right? Like, oh, it's on the website, here's the link or something like that. But if it's not correct or current, then there's no point of sending them to the website. So it's kind of like an easy, one-stop shop for everybody for communication.
Ever change, you know, you're well aware of that, I hate to say it. If I, if I'm gonna be tasked with monthly going through and looking, trying to release that site, there's a fair amount of time.
Well, there's also somebody hired to do that, so.
And I'm just gonna, yeah, Missy's supposed to, you know, push the elementary, Tim pushes high school. Bill has athletics. Of course, they have people, secretaries and stuff that are supposed to. I have the school board site and of course, a few other things, calendars and stuff. And I agree that we have to do it better, you know, but again, I guess I want that. For a sentence goal, I want to know how to measure, you know, is it random checks or where do we have to meet? Because I'm gonna put enough directive on every person that if you'll notice, and I don't know if anyone has, that's not where I want it, but there was a new addition on the front page that came from myself asking Mike, because I saw it on some other pages where he posts things out to Facebook. If you're not a Facebook person.
You don't get to see it.
So we're starting to notify, well, I saw on several websites where that was going into their webpage at the same time. It's not necessarily interactive, but like say we put, you know, conferences, whatever Tim said, 7th to 9th, you know, on a Facebook post, that can go back to the website from the center. I think it should be in a different spot now, still on the front page, it should be on the bottom instead of the top. But he was able to get it to start doing that. It's not interactive, but there's 30 pictures. You need a Facebook account, now, this way you explained it, but at least you can see that initial post. And I think that is a step towards improving. It's another example of something that's always up to date, you know, type deal. If we have a school closed, we try putting it on the website, but if we do a Facebook post, it's gonna be there too. So people that, hey, you're getting all this on Facebook, if they don't want to drive Facebook, they can at least see those posts. So I think that was a, you know, step, but, you know, I'm all for, you know, trying to do more after it. And it is, it is a first impression for certain groups.
Jen has something?
Well, I kind of want to second some of what, because Ted and I talked about some of these too. And I like the idea of a technology initiative goal and finding a plan for, you know, now what do the staff need, how do we start implementing some of those? And that could be structured enough, I mean, when you think of measurement, we can have a plan, you know, meet enough to have a plan by January 1, and then pick out two to three things that are gonna happen in that before the end of the calendar year, you know, or the end of the school year. That's one idea of measuring that. The idea of student retention, when I think of how I understand goals, because I'm new at this, as a board member, is, you know, our job is to kind of set the direction and how the district takes it is out of, you know, from your leadership. So when we think of, I think of, our ultimate goal is to educate the best we can every kid in our district. And we need to, that's how we, one can, like as a business, that's the best we can do. We only have so much market share, we need to optimize our market share. So if we go up 1 percentage point, then we are at least getting as best we can. You know, or at least we're growing. I've talked to a lot of you guys about what I think about growth, and that could mean so many different things. That's where I think that 1% is at least a measure of we're at least capturing as many kids or more kids percentage-wise than we did last year in our district. Because everybody between, you know, a parent or a teacher or administrator or a board member or community business owner, everybody is benefit from, my kids benefit if more kids are here. So I need to be invested in it, you know, business benefits if their families, they want to bring into town, they want to grow, those families know they have good education here. So everybody in town should have some ownership in that. And so, and I think that really comes from the top down. So whether it's, you know, it could be customer service. It could, it may be identifying why kids are leaving, but it also could be how could we better serve the kids? So maybe it's, a part of it is customer service, maybe part of it is are we communicating well enough? Maybe these are the issues that are come up, are we still dealing with them? Whether it's in special ed or recess, you know, playground, or how are we dealing with problems? Because that's sometimes, you know, something that not only can we lose less kids if we're serving the kids better, but we also then get other kids excited to come in. You know, some of it's marketing, some of it's Facebook page, some of it's figuring out how to best communicate with families. So I like the idea of the 1%, and then what you and your administration thinks is the direction to go. I mean, we could sort out how to go, but I don't know if, you know, that's an easy thing to say unless you do an assessment. And maybe you need to assess between now and February, what that, you know, what that looks like. How do we know? Maybe it's an exploratory thing right now. The other thing you had mentioned was revisiting the Blue Ribbon and as a continual basis. Do you mean like, what would be the point of it? Like, what would be the point of that?
The whole thing is, is the group, and going back even prior to me starting in January, where it was served on at least part that I remember. They went through and then I took over and, you know, as I came in and we went for a year, year and a half. I'm not so concerned about the mission and vision, because I mean, you could wordsmith that thing every year, but I think our mission and vision, at least to me, is still probably doable, but it's going back. And there were, I'm gonna say six, eight, whatever, areas that were, you know, goals were set and we were moving on some things, tech being one of them. But revisiting those and asking the new ask of anyone that's interested in coming and sitting down, I was gonna say on a quarterly basis or something, let's look at where do you want to see things going? Obviously, everything comes back to the board as a whole from that group. But again, I think it takes the board wanting something like that to look at where we're at. Because now, I'm in my sixth year, so even if that was year two and it finally got finished up, we're getting to a five-year mark that you should come back, at least in my gut, and are we the same place that we were? And we have to, you know, things that, you know, some things were done, you know, technically checked out. There were other things still sitting out there, and I think it's worth, you know, relooking at. And, you know, we have a vision, which we should all have, different visions. Let's get a few things out on paper so to see that the community wants, that we want of our school and our community, and see where we're going. And again, it's no open ask, I don't, I don't have the same thought of, that was kind of, I think almost I can't pick, you know, ask, and I guess I wasn't thinking of going that road. I was thinking of, let's have a, you know, open house meeting for people that are interested and lay it out upfront, we would like to meet these, you know, four times over the year or something. And we'd like to look at what the past group did, you know, and see where we're at and go forward. And more, I mean, some places call it, you know, coffee with so-and-so or whatever, but there's a, it's not just come and chat. It's, let's get some direction, let's bring it back to the group as a whole. Do you like these ideas? You know.
I liked it. It was like three school board members on it. And then a lot of the community people, it was really good. There wasn't an hour that wasn't spent good. And we went through a lot of stuff in those years, so, and Jen was part of that. It was, Blue Ribbon Committee was good.
No, it was, I just, that's where I see that, you know, if not, how do we get our input or public input, I guess? That is what I'm looking at when you talk communication or input. You at least gotta ask, you know, like you say, those were, and I think it was started with Nordin Nelson.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Like you say, they, I'm not gonna say didn't open the invite, but they, you know, asked some very key people and you wanted to ask. I think that maybe can be done, but I guess I would open it up to anyone, you know. Let's see where we get it. If we only get three people, then maybe we do have to, you know, ask more, or maybe that's something to, either people are happy or people, you know, whatever. You know, so I guess that's where I just, I think it's getting to be that time. Otherwise, we're gonna end up 10 years out and never look back at it. And that's, unfortunately, that's what happens with a lot of our stuff, you don't have enough time. You do it, it gets done, and it goes on the shelves and you speak, and.
And that's one thing I'd be a little concerned about is we get too many goals for you.
Yeah.
We're gonna get a little bit of something and not a lot of substance. So I'd like, possibly, maybe, you know, instead of giving all these goals to administration to do it, maybe the board can start, like our before meeting today, we were talking about, maybe board be more involved in these goals.
Well, as I was, as I was coming up with some of these goals that I was thinking about, when we do the review, one of the questions is at the end is what tools could we have provided to help you better with your job? And so that, if we do something where we talk about student retention, one of the tools we could give, and this is just hypothetical, but we could say, well, here's, now you have an advertising budget or, you know, something like that, if that was part of the solution. So I think you're right, we would need to see about how we could better help Kevin so it doesn't all fall on his shoulder.
That's a good idea, yeah.
I like the idea of revisiting the goals. I think our mission and vision two are pretty solid. Now, they wouldn't still ask the question of the people at the group, whether it's worth changing, but our district goals that are on the website are, were to be met in 15, 16, so they're pretty bold. And, and I don't think we revisit them. I mean, as a board, we should be like, we should be, I believe, setting those goals and then saying, okay. That's kind of our job is to help make that direction and then, and then have you and your administration and staff gonna take off with that. And I don't think we've probably given that support then for a while in that way. And maybe, I think if the Blue Ribbon Panel comes together, and I think it's a great way to revisit those goals and reestablish them, and maybe there's just some tweaking. I think that would have to happen pretty regular, and then you get to a quarterly is kind of like a check-in. But like, I think if you didn't, if you talked about stuff that didn't meet for three months, you really wouldn't get to a point. I mean, if I remember right, there were some somewhat labor-intensive meetings that we had with MSBA that really kind of sort out what we're gonna go into these, what the goals really should be. And I remember, I remember at the time, all those objectives, I remember thinking, how's Kevin gonna do all that? Like, there were so many little things that we were asking you to do. I think a real thoughtful process of where are we at? You know, what are the highlighted areas we need to change and what goals we want to set for the next three to five years in that area would be really valuable as a board with community and staff involvement. And then, you know, after you have that group, then you kind of say, let's check in whatever's regular. But I think you have to be a little bit more, you have to do a little bit more regular work upfront, in my mind, to really get there. Otherwise, it's gonna get dragged out, we're gonna be three meetings in the end of the year. How would we make much progress at that time?
Depends on how much it needs to be completely tweaked, I guess. I was looking at that, you know, again, you go back to when we started, we spent, I don't know how many, it was just on mission and vision. I mean, we spent a ton of time, you know, and not that, then some subgroups, you know, did different, you know, goal areas, but I guess my thought was, whether it's quarterly, whatever the timeframe is, if you were looking at whether it's all of them or you picked two of them, and every quarter you were looking at for the next five years, if you kept that up, to me, maybe you would keep up, maybe you won't. I mean, I'm open for whatever, I just think they need to be revisited and at least messed it up, if that's right.
I agree with you on that.
I'll be honest, I haven't looked to see if I think, maybe we've knocked everything off all day, you know. I'm optimistic, you know, if we have to start over, then it isn't gonna be more labor-intensive.
Or if we just even, like, some of it needs to be an assessment, like where are we at communication?
Well, I think that's where you're.
And where are we, you know, in five years, since that time? I mean, communication changes, like how you communicate with family, maybe that's what we need to ask. Maybe we need the information on how are we doing for customer service? Or, you know, what, you know, what technology needs, that's part of it happening. But I like the idea of moving into that goal setting as a board. I think it's time we revisit that, I agree with that.
One last thing is, I didn't mention the student achievement, because I just thought that that was kind of a foregone conclusion, that we'll come up with some kind of student achievement scale like we did, or like we've had every year, so. So that would be one of additional goals, but just kind of figured we were gonna do that. Anybody else? It's a lot to chew on in a short period of time, so.
So how are we gonna, and I guess I'm going back to Terry, is everything on here my goals?
Well.
Are we gonna write it down, or where are we?
Well, do we, do we need an official action item to assign these goals? Oh, okay. I assumed with that we did.
We need to come up with my goals, I mean, unless we want formal.
I, no, no.
Second, we haven't in the past, we picked out three, four things.
I just wasn't sure if it was necessary.
Like you say, I can get wording put together, you know.
Could one of the, could a lot of what you brought up Ted and Jen, could it be one goal and put together?
It almost seems like the student retention, customer service could go together where like, he's already going to be meeting with admin, admin will do a better job supporting their staff, staff will do a better job teaching their kids, so it's all gonna be like this downfall positive. I mean, the computer stuff, the website stuff, it just seems like that's not on him, that's.
So, yeah, so the website stuff?
That are supposed to be setting that stuff.
The website stuff, I wasn't actually thinking of as part of the technology piece of it, because I was thinking more of communication, yeah.
Right.
Okay. And yeah, I agree that it's not his job to update the whole website, that's not, I guess that's.
He should have to sit and watch and make sure that they're doing, that that should be their goals, that they're making sure they're checking out the data.
But, so, but then, then whose is it?
It's his oversight, but I, could all those, could there be?
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But as a review at some point, but not having to sit down every month and say, okay, they did that, they, you know, they did that. I think that would be their, like, the employee goals, and then at the review, check over and make sure what's getting done.
Delegating, I think, delegating and oversight would be something of yours, but the rest of it sounds like a lot of work for other people.
Well, I think it is, but like I said, whatever we pick, I will work on words. We're also gonna come up with a way, how do we measure? Because, you know, that's the piece, I guess, I also want to know. Like you said, Rox, I think it's easy to.
Say read 100% of it.
Whether to sit down, have a one-on-one conference afterwards, you know, it's fairly easy, did you do it?
Right.
How well, you know, that's open for, you know, discussion, but the others, that's always, you know, like you said, the academic goal, that's the tough part of that one in the past is, it's not where you can list. I can list some things we tried this year, we did last year, you know, whether they're truly affected or not, that's, that's a tougher, you know, argument. Most of the time you're, when you have a goal, you can, you know, demonstrate. Like you say, if it was community involvement, I used to list 10 things I did over the. 10 things I did over the year or something. At least, you know, you can say, you can all have a different varied opinion if I just put my heart into it or not. You know, that's, there's a discrepancy, but at least you can, you can add to what we did, you know, or minimally that, and then you figure out. So, I mean, I need to know, I guess, however many you wanna put on here.
So, the only problem I have with Roxas is not the goal itself. It's, I, I don't know enough about how that process works either, um, clearly end up, but if that is one of your goals, could you have it done by tomorrow kind of thing? Like, is it more of a task than a district, I mean, than a superintendent goal?
No, I, no, I believe that, that, yeah, I don't know how to explain all of it in...
To someone who doesn't understand it like me.
One sentence, you know. It's like, there's a process that is done, and to have a better understanding of that process, and, and what a special ed teacher does, I think is, is, could be, could take him, I think it could be a three-month process, let's say. I'll, I'd say three months, and you could have that goal done.
So, he doesn't just get a packet, read through it, and then he's done with the goal? Okay.
That's not what I would...
Would that be, at some point, and maybe this isn't, but it's micromanaging, is there a point where that, you know, is there a lot of different things that he could know inside and out that really is above, beyond what a superintendent should do?
Yeah, but I'm not looking at him managing it. I'm looking at him understanding it. I'm not asking him to do anything with it afterwards, other than have a bigger bank of knowledge when he is speaking with special ed. Or just a bigger bank of knowledge. I'm not asking him to change one eye. I just want him to have more knowledge on it. And I think Kevin would admit, it's kind of, it's a big thing.
Well, I think I did my own process fairly decent. I've been through enough of, I'm gonna say challenging IP's with people. There are more of the process can I learn, without doubt, you know, just like, say, anyone sitting here, even if you're in the education field, you go into a math classroom, if you want me to know more about math classroom, there's still areas I can learn. You want me to go to a fire classroom, there's areas I can learn. Do I have general idea, knowledge of the IP process? Yeah.
Yeah, I know you have a general...
I know what it, yeah, I can, I can look through and, I mean, I'm well aware of the paper overload that we have.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for you to say, feel sorry for special ed teachers 'cause of their paper overload. I'm just saying, you don't know what you don't know. And sometimes you can learn something like, oh, you know, I did not know that. And, oh, you know what? I think I could help streamline this a little bit. Not asking you to do it, but just to be knowledgeable about it in case you think of something. All I want is knowledge.
Okay, so I have, um, um, so this is what we've talked about thus far. Technology, student achievement, which I think is, can star that one. Communication, student retention, monthly admin meetings, and special, and, uh, special ed recommendation of the process. So, um, I, I think at four is a good number to go to, and...
So, you have academic, you have technology, you have admin meetings, you have communication. Did you have like a blue ribbon or some district?
Oh, no, I did not. So, district goals, or reevaluate district goal kind of thing.
Somewhere you had student retention, didn't you?
Yep, student retention's on there. And so, um, so student retention, yeah, customer, well, customer service and communication are two in the same to me a little bit. Um, with student retention, I think that it improves when some of this other, like, when communication improves and stuff. So, I'd be willing to, um, let that one go if we focused also on communication and customer service then.
Could we not, could we not use one umbrella for a lot of those?
Well, if we all lump them under the umbrella, it's, he's still gotta do the work, whether we call it...
Right, but I mean, and have the, the other parts as a, parts of it, the subsets? Should, shall we say, of one goal?
It's cheating. You have a lot of different goals.
Yeah, I think that, I really do think that that's a clever way to assign more goals. I'm not saying that it's, it's, but we couldn't do it, but, yeah.
It's undoable.
I, I just thought of making it easier, not harder. I, I was looking at a way to, 'cause, yeah, that's a lot. I think that's too much.
Kevin, the administrative monthly meetings, does that need to be a goal, or is that just something you can?
I think it does, because I'll be honest, there's times we meet, we may have met over the last three, four years on a regular basis. There's times, what happens is, you know, as your calendar gets old, and things get tight, this is running, and it's running just fine. You know, and like I said, I'm not saying there's a month that goes by, and you don't talk, but having consistent where you can jot things, and they can jot things.
And do it intentionally.
And you're gonna meet, and we're not gonna vary our calendar unless someone's leaving, so to speak. It's, we haven't got to that point. We start out, I've started out good at different times, and we get one or two in pretty soon. You know, we don't do it again. I mean, again, not that we don't touch base, that, I think it is better.
Well, I think it's gonna help the communication piece as well, with everybody.
Plus, I mean, what's the outcome of it?
But that's all of that, to make sure we're on the same page. And again, it's a, I mean, minimum an hour, maybe we've gone two hours off. And they all have as busy or busier as schedules at night, but it's gonna be taking, and like I say, we're not moving, you know. We haven't been able to get to that point, but when it becomes a goal.
Well, could you use that, the administrative meetings, to have the three of you discuss your list? That list that Ted and you had?
I can think of it as a, almost an objective. Like, that's a, that's a, to me, the administrative meetings are a means to get to these other things, whether it's technology, you know, how, of overall district technology goal, or an overall district retention goal, or an overall district plan, you know, if you're doing overall. I mean, like, I feel like that's a, you could choose eight different things if you wanted to do to get to technology, student retention, customer service. And if that is really important, that's something that you guys could just do. Or if something came up one month, like, I don't know if that, like, if something came up and you guys had a really good meeting one month, and you needed two months to kind of get, I don't know, I feel like it's a...
I guess I feel it is important, 'cause we haven't gotten there. And then there's times that we should have been, you know, having face-to-face communication, and we don't. And it's, I, it's just different. We don't, you know, it's kind of like a main having board meetings or staff meetings at certain time. And there's a reason they do it, and I'm just, I don't know about the healthcare, but I'm guessing, maybe you have some times, we don't have.
But if you met Kevin, would you guys, would you envision that you guys would be discussing some of the stuff that Ted already has for these goals?
It depends on, it depends on what, I mean, to be honest, like a tech plan. I guess my goal is A, obviously, get staff input, get administrative input. I think our tech people have to run with it, it is quite a bit as well. You know, I mean, it, it's kind of like, I'm just gonna use it, this, um, Paul's elementary project. Tom has been out a fair amount. And there's a reason I've done a good chunk of that. I mean, if I'm gonna do all that, I might as well not have someone in a certain position. You know, the same with our tech people. They should be running that tech plan a good chunk of it. Again, I'm not saying I'm not there to help guide or to participate. Um, but again, it, you know, I guess I see it as, I think it's important to get going. Whether the superintendent should drive it or not.
Well, so with the tech plan, do you think that, um, that the current staff would do that though? That, I mean, you think that either Mike and Casey are gonna get together and really come up with a tech plan as part of their job? I mean, whether they're supposed to or not, I guess I don't know what their job description have, but...
I think they will with some guidance, and because, if not, why should, again, assume that? But it goes back to special ed, it goes back to, I'm not the expert in everything, you know. And the tech plan, I see as being on their plate for the, aid them to assist, aid to help put together, us to help as administration, as teachers, as paras, as, you know, on what our needs are. But I think they should.
Well, would principals have more to give to the tech plan than you would?
Well...
Oh, I'm saying more?
You would think so.
Then, would it be something that principals could help guide, instead of Kevin?
But each time you take a step down, you know, even if you wanna go back to, you know, yeah, your ideas on communication, but it's gonna be all of us, and, you know, if there's...
I'm just trying to find a way for...
So, if we, if we take the technology, 'cause I think we're gonna do it, we've already started it too, you know.
Same thing. Why, if you miss out, put, put the survey, you know, again, I got questions, but who put the survey together? I mean, should I have been doing that? I don't know.
So, I guess that's the, that's the point though, then, is, is, if that's the case, we need, we need Mike to do it then, right? And, uh, I guess that, that needs to happen. He, I don't know, if, if you, if that's what you're saying, and that's not a goal, then as we're getting together, I, even at that meeting, I don't necessarily, was he even at that meeting that we had to discuss this?
The reason I put it in as a goal is to, I will make a goal of making it happen, and...
Yeah, and I'm not asking you to come up with a plan.
I'm not saying I'm gonna do 100% of it. You know, just like, I didn't do 100% of that survey. We got ideas from interested people, whether I typed it, or whether I get someone to type, I wanna see it through, because it's not moving anywhere right now. Same thing with, you know, Blue Ribbon Panel. Again, it could be a board, you know, again, I'll help. I mean, board's gonna have to be, I think, involved as well. I mean, it's, again, it comes back to the whole board at some point, but we should have board participation, we should have staff participation, we should have community participation, um, and see where we wanna go. But like you say, it's, to me, it's getting some, I mean, you can lump it all into providing the best education possible.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, yeah, that's what I see it as.
But I'm gonna ask you, how do we measure? 'Cause I want, you know, some fairly clear, like you say, it doesn't have to be cut and stone, but I wanna be able to show you I've met my goals. Again, you can discriminate, and that, not, not a bad way, whether you think it was done, you know, excellent, mediocre, you know, half-heartedly, you know, that piece. But I wanna be able to provide you, you know, if you wanted five things, I wanna be able to provide you seven, and, you know, technically show you that.
I have a suggestion. It, it seems like we're not going to get to an end to this quickly. I think there's a lot more to it than we thought. And I think we have to have a meeting to discuss more. Now that we hear from you, like, we should have them...
Yeah, let me, let's let Jen talk, and then I have something I'd like to say to make it wrap, wrap up.
So, I have a different understanding, I think, of what our goals to you should be. I think how I understand it is, the board is supposed to set the direction, and the superintendent has to figure out how to kind of get there, right? So, we set an academic goal, and it's go from this sequence, these score to this, these score. We don't tell you how to do it. We don't tell you to do X amount on a monthly basis. We just say you have to go do that, and then we're supposed to evaluate it. I don't love that goal, 'cause I don't yet understand what those numbers are really giving us in terms of student achievement and all that thing. And I hope to learn more over this next year. But that's an example of a really typical goal that we would give. And we talk about student retention, or at least, at least get best service students, serving as many of, as many of the kids in our district as we want, and we want a 1% change. How you do that, that's just a number we look at at the end of the year. You get to decide what you think is the most valuable with your team, maybe through monthly meetings, maybe through whatever. If we're looking at a technology initiative, you definitely have to be, in my opinion, have to be in charge of that, because you get the resources, we allocate the resources to you, and you have to decide how much is gonna go to elementary for their needs, how much is gonna go to this, should we bring in a speaker? That's, that's, Mike and his, his staff member can't do that. That has to go bigger in terms of technology, what is needed for staff. That's, I think that's, your leadership is the bigger umbrella over that. And then it might be, you know, Mike and his team have to do this, and we need to figure out in the budget how to do this, and we need to make sure staff feels supported like this. Like, that's how I think, and that might go through Kevin and Missy, and it might go through Mike, and it might be a team of teachers that are excited about something, that drives some of that too. I mean, that's how I see a goal setting. Like, that's where the technology initiative. So, it might be assess. We might say we want you to assess and develop a plan and start implementing. What that means, then, reevaluate later, say, how did you assess? What was the plan? And what has started to be implemented? Or what, how will it be implemented? That's, I guess, a difference, and I think what we're, am I making?
And I guess give me three generic, four generic goals, and I will come back.
I, I might be alone in that. I'm just...
So, I guess I have a little different opinion. And, and, and again, I agree, I agree. That's why I put tech now, and I wanna be involved. But I guess I disagree a little bit on who is involved and how much, because, I'll be honest, I don't know what a third grade teacher needs in their classroom. And I think that's where they need to give input if they're not willing, or if they need something, it's Mike or Casey that figure out what options are out there. And, hey, it's 10,000, it's 20,000. Then it comes back to me, can we do this? And Tim and Missy, and, you know, is it essential or not? And then to the board as an ask, you know, uh, you know, we have 200,000 sitting here that it was requested for, here's what we recommend. You know, kind of like we have done with budgeting and stuff. And like you say, I think it is important to get it to move forward, but...
And I, I value that bottom-up approach. Like, let's really see what the front lines want. But if everybody's doing that, we have all these things coming up. But our job as board and super, to try to, what is, what is our overall plan? Like, we are the leaders that we drive that plan. And it might mean that some of those initial, individual wants don't always have that, but we have a better overall driving mission that you can say, yeah, this fits. The third grade teacher needs this to, to meet our technology plan. Yeah, we're gonna get that. Versus, this is a really special project, but it doesn't fit into our plan that we've developed, and we're implementing. Like, I'm just, I think it's top-down versus bottom-up in a way, you know.
But it goes back to, you don't have a technology plan, you really don't. And we have a Blue Ribbon District Plan five years ago. You know, you really, when we budget and ask questions, are we, you know, spending...
I agree. Those are two of my goals. I think we should have both of those goals.
Yeah, that's why they're, that's why I put them on there, how we get there. Um, yeah.
So, um, I, just a couple additional comments. It seems like, and I don't mean this in a negative way at all, because it's, um, a, our tech department has a lot to do. I mean, it's a lot to manage. But it, to me, it seems like they'd be more of a reactive than a proactive group. So, they're not going out, and I could be wrong on this, and that's fine. I've been wrong most of today. But the, they're not going out and asking teachers, you know, how can you use technology to better educate your kids? We did that on a, on a survey, but it doesn't seem like they're like, um, you know, if a teacher will say, we need this, and then they'll go and provide that to the teacher, right? And, um, so they're not being proactive in it, as far as I can tell. I could be wrong on that. But, um, what I would, what I think, 'cause I think we all agree, we don't wanna give you too many goals. Um, and in the past, we've given you four goals, and one of them is gonna be based off the student achievement. So, what I'd like to, as, like, far as fairness, because the board, it's the board that sets your goals, is it possible that we list the other goals, and then the board, each person from the board picks their other three, then we sum that up, and then the top ones are your goals? Or is that too much?
Would you want them to?
To me, that seems like the fairest way to gather input from every board member.
Sir, you, we're gonna have a list of different goals to pick from?
Of what we've discussed tonight. And then you pick the three that you think that should be the goals, his goals the most. And then he ends up with four goals total, because the student achievement, one gets added in there as one that has to be in there.
Who's gonna, who's gonna make that list? Would you do that?
Well, it seems like it's already made, though. Like, you have the student achievement one, you have the one which is connecting with community staff, board, admin. You have the tech initiative, and you have the admin monthly meetings, which are helping the customer service and communication.
And the district goal, if you didn't say that, the Blue Ribbon District Goal. Okay, I'm sorry.
And the specialist.
And the specialist.
And the specialist.
Student retention, did you say that?
No, 'cause that seems to kind of go right with the monthly meetings and all that kind of communication connection.
So, whoever brought up student retention?
I brought up student retention, but I'm willing to let that one go as part of a, that I think all these work towards that, really.
Right. It just seems like they're all gonna trickle into making it...
Not to say student retention isn't very important.
Thank you. 'Cause I was, that was gonna be my question.
I, I, I feel frustrated with, um, having, I just don't think this is clear enough for us, for me, to be able to vote on. I guess, I think we need to have a little work session to get some more clarity on this. The, there, the goals are lofty, and there are many. I just think...
Does anybody else feel the same way as Rox? 'Cause I feel like I could pick out which goals were most important to me right now.
Yeah.
'Cause Rox is alone on this, but she's...
I like the idea of a work session.
And the deadline is October 1st?
Yeah, I think a work session is...
For this, the deadline, obviously, I don't want it to be halfway through the year, when you can get your goals. I mean, it doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Three to three.
So, work session, then?
I'm all right with that.
Okay. When's, uh, when's the soonest we can get something like that going then? Okay, when's, when's the soonest we can get something like that going then? At the work session, I still would like to do pretty much what I just said.
Yeah, I just want more clarification on this. Okay, when?
I can pretty much do whenever, so.
When's the soonest we can do it?
Wednesday, Wednesday?
Seventy-two hour notice.
Oh, so that's what they, first day?
Five o'clock on, on, on.
Five o'clock on what day? Wednesday?
Thursday, right?
Thursday?
Right, I mean, that's not some, three days from now.
Well, you gotta get, but how do you have to give notice though? What's the legal way, is it on our website?
We have to put it on, on the board book.
We don't have to put it out in the journal?
Yes, on the board book, so theoretically it's whenever we get posted tonight, which can't be right now, but I mean, for the most part, you're lucky.
So it should be three days from tomorrow?
Theoretically.
Okay, the soonest.
It seems like you need everything, right?
No, I can't, the soonest I could do is the 20th, Tuesday, next Tuesday, 24th.
I can read that out.
I can, that works for me.
Twenty-four.
Tuesday is 24th, what time? Whatever time, well, there's.
I can do any time, sorry.
If we could do it during the day, that would be amazing.
Yeah, you can miss, I'm trying to make all the cross-country meetings as much as possible, I'm okay, missing some, but if there's a way of working around that, I appreciate it.
We do seven thirty?
Okay.
AM?
I can do that.
I can do seven thirty. Or I could do.
I can, seven thirty.
I could do, I could do.
I can't bring Tina to work until nine, so.
Oh, it's after nine?
I could do anything where from nine to three.
Nine thirty, I could do nine thirty.
Can anyone do eleven to twelve?
Eleven to twelve, I can do eleven to twelve.
Okay, me too.
On what day, no?
The 24th.
Next Tuesday?
Well, we got to kind of have ideas of what, if there was a, something, a printout or something.
Is there a?
Eleven o'clock on the 24th, right?
Sounds good.
Okay, where at? You'll let us know?
Let's, let's plan for the conference room up in the library, does that work?
Yep.
Upstairs here, the little conference room?
Where?
In the, in the high school library, where there's a conference room.
Oh, okay, mm-hmm, yep.
Does that work?
Perfect. Okay, let me just click.
Rox, you said a printout, would you want?
Well, I was just thinking, if someone could explain, if someone had a little better explanation of each one of these and share it with everyone so we could be prepared, but I don't know if that's legal with you.
I, I could come up with a quick, like, sentence summary, but I think anything past that, then you get too into the weeds and then that's what we start talking about.
Yeah, just list out what we, the ones we're talking about.
Basically what I have here is what I would think.
Yeah, even a worksheet that we could start writing notes on when we start talking would help, something.
Okay.
We'll post it to board book as well, we'll do, so that it's a document.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And I can work on getting something together.
Yeah, I won't, I won't get too much into like increasing this much or doing that, but just the general idea then, okay.
Well, I.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Community Ed Advisory Board, and I see we have a spreadsheet here. Is that all we have?
On September 11th, we're meeting in December 11th.
Okay, oh, I thought you were meeting next week.
No.
Okay.
The only thing we went over at the meeting this last week was the ECF and trick-or-treating night is going to be set up here. They're looking for any groups or individuals or businesses that are willing to set up a table to handle treats. That is on.
September.
October 24th.
Okay. Next up, Recreation Commission.
We passed the AD Rec Director Agreement, got that passed, which was good, and the funding amount went up 2% as reflected in the budget. So we have another year agreement as Rec Director and Athletic Director, and then we have a meeting on Wednesday, so, coming up this Wednesday, but that's what was done at the last meeting.
Well, I saw that the city, since our population has declined, they lost like a grand for the Rec Department and the city was going to make up that, is that?
That's a possibility, they were talking about it.
Okay. All right, next up, the meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, point 03, to discuss the district labor negotiation strategy related to negotiations with Local 510 and Local 331. Need a motion?